Start our work session. The, the first item on our work session is some updated news from our, the head of our budget committee, Phil Young, and I think the updating is going on sort of as we speak. I've seen a lot of, lot of email traffic this afternoon about property taxes. So we're eager to hear from you, Phil, about where you think things are going.
Okay, thanks, Marty. I'll get started then. You know, when my last, when my talking points were distributed to the, to council members, we had just received some negative news regarding income and property taxes. And I may have struck a more negative tone than intended in my talking points. So in tonight's discussion, I also want to mention some of the positive aspects, such as the possibility of the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds. Council President Shaw, Marty, you may want to update the council on that regard in a little bit, as you've been the lead on this for the town. So what's new on the budget front? After the council's last budget working session, the Budget Committee received another month of data for income and property taxes. Unfortunately, these data were in the wrong direction, and it now appears that income tax revenue will be about $15,000 less than we had forecast for fiscal year 21, dropping from 860,000 to 845,000. And property taxes could be about 65,000 less than last anticipated. This latter development stems largely from the fact that February's revenues were about $62,000 less than last February. That was a big change. The Budget Committee is investigating both the projected property tax decline and the income tax decline, particularly, particularly to ensure that no accounting errors have been made by the Comptroller's Office or the Montgomery County Property Tax Office. If we receive any positive news, we'll be sure to update the council as quickly as possible. However, I don't expect we'll have much before the May council meeting, at least on the income side. Just this afternoon, as Marty was mentioning, we received a file of assessments, property by property, for the last six years. We still need to complete our analysis. We only just got it this afternoon. But a quick look at the data makes me hopeful that in the remainder of fiscal year 21, we might receive more in property taxes than we are currently projecting. So what are the implications of the most recent monthly data? Revising the FY '21 revenue base to reflect the latest monthly data for income and property taxes does have a significant impact on the medium-term budget. If we make no other changes, by the end of fiscal year '26, unencumbered reserves would be a negative $445,000, some $530,000 less than before. This is because the lower, lower flows accumulate over a six-year period, FY '21 to FY '26. Unencumbered reserves would turn negative as early as fiscal year '23. So the Budget Committee has come up with several options for addressing this problem. Council members may wish to suggest others, of course. The options that we came up with were, one, reduce capital spending, particularly on large, lumpy projects like roads and curves. Perhaps cutting in half each year would save about $300,000. I'm assuming we, we can't cut the cost of the $50,000 study. However, this should be discussed with a road curb expert to see if it's even feasible to do that. The question is, is it inefficient to do it more slowly? The council might also consider delaying the planned FY '26 capital spending of 300,000 into a later year. Two, reduce services, operating expenses, such as sidewalks, snow removal, or composting. Elimination of these two items would save about $80,000 a year, or $320,000 if we did it from FY '23 on. A third option is to raise property taxes by, say, two cents per $100 assessed. Each two-cent increase would yield about $638,000 over the five-year period. That's a 20% increase in property taxes. Assuming 415 homes in Somerset, that's about $300 per household each year on average. Raising property taxes could be explained as necessary to maintain the current level of services and create sufficient resources to finance our capital spending plans, including road and curb improvements. An increase in the property tax of two cents in FY '23 would also leave us with positive unencumbered reserves throughout the medium term and buy us one year to see if revenues rebound on their own as the economic situation improves, or if there have been any accounting errors with respect to our tax collections. So we're not proposing a tax increase now. This would be for FY '23 and would just show up in the five-year plan. The budget write-up in the May Journal could indicate that this property tax increase would not be implemented if revenues were to rebound and/or sufficient ARPA funds were, were to be received in order to preserve our spending and reserve plans without the need for a property tax increase. Moreover, the possible property tax increase is not for the FY '22 budget, as I said before. The Journal article could note that the mayor and the council just thought that it would be prudent to alert residents to this possibility, starting in FY '23. Finally, the Budget Committee would recommend doing a meet, a midterm review of the budget in January 2022, once we've received and had time to analyze the key November income tax distribution, as well as the September and December income tax distributions, and made some progress with our income and property tax investigations. Hopefully, the picture will have improved by then, and we could do another write-up in the Town Journal at that time. So thank you very much. Those are my comments. Any questions?
Over news, Phil. Who wants to start the conversation here?
This is Steve. I was curious about the timing that we'll get some more information. First, I want to say thank you so much for everything that the Budget Committee does. I know that it takes a lot of time also to do some of this detective work. I recall, I, I'm vaguely familiar with the way some of our funds come in, in tranches, as opposed to a very steady, regular, every-month type revenue stream. Do we, because I'm anticipating there's going to be, like, requests to extend the pool season into October. Will we have a better financial picture before then?
Well, that would be in the middle of fiscal year 2022, and I would certainly hope that by, by January, when we plan to do another midterm review of the budget, we should have more information. We would have got the November income tax distribution, which is a very large one. And once we know that, we pretty much know almost the rest of the year, really. We would also have the September and December property tax distributions, which, as you all know from paying your property taxes, that's when they're due in September and December. So the majority of that money comes in those two months also. So yes, we would have a lot more information.
Thank you.
But, but just to modify that a little bit, so we won't get that information before October of this year, which is when it's likely that we'll see a request to have the pool open late, right?
Right, that's correct. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, we don't get it until, well, we, the only thing we'd have would be, yeah, the September, but we'd have to make a decision before October. I was thinking October of the next year, but it's October of 2021 we're talking about.
Right.
The two pieces of, of information we might have, we will have before then is by around May 10th, Phil mentioned the ARPA money, the American Rescue Plan Act money. By May 10th, we're supposed to have an idea of how much money Somerset would be eligible for and on what kinds of activities the money could be spent. I have, at this point, it's not at all clear, so. And the second piece of information is, the, it seems like the Budget Committee has been going fast and furiously trying to figure out what's in the data files they just got about our properties. And although they're not going to have answers overnight, I would guess that within a couple of months, for sure, they should have some idea of whether there are any errors in the collection and distribution of our property taxes.
Yeah, let me just add a word or two about that, Marty. We've been looking at that pretty much all afternoon. In fact, the Property Tax Office sent us this beautiful file with six years of data, house by house, property by property, including the properties that Somerset owns and, and the Somerset Elementary School. So we have all those properties, year by year. And the interesting thing is that when, when I added up all the assessments for all the properties excluding what Somerset owns, the town of Somerset owns, and what, and the school, and the Maryland Parks owns, there's two properties that they own, apparently, two lots. If I exclude those, I'm assuming that we don't pay any property taxes. I need to confirm that. But if I exclude those, the, a set, the percentage change in those assessments matches up pretty closely with the property tax revenues that we were getting year by year. The percentage changes. Right, so it should, it looks like it's a pretty good database. But then what happens is, in calendar year 20, the assessments go up by 1%, and that's the number that should affect our property tax collections for fiscal year 21, because it's September and December of 2020 that comes in, in FY '21. So the, the calendar year 20 assessments went up by 1%. But our projection for property taxes is a decline of 9%. And that's based on the data we have through February, and then projecting the remaining four months at about $8,600. Now, I looked at the last few years, and those last four months, every year, were right around $8,600 to $9,000. So I, I, they look pretty stable for the last four months, but it's very odd at the same time that there's a 1% increase in the assessments, and it looked like the property taxes are going down by 9%. So that's what we have to follow up on with them, and that could take some time to figure that out. But, you know, there's a possibility we'll, we'll, we could get some more money there.
Any, any other questions of Phil?
Yeah, I mean, I just, sorry, go ahead, Franny.
Oh, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the road repair. The first point where you recommend as one option to reduce capital spending on big projects. And I recognize this is not something that we're voting on tonight, but I just want to throw out my sort of vote for a more sort of bare bones idea of having Matt and Doug and, maybe if we can get Larry to come over and help out, just, just, you know, we just don't have that many roads. And it just seems to me that even if we get the order of repairs slightly wrong, you know, maybe not perfectly in the right order, but close enough that we would be able to save money on getting a consultant on, you know, out here to tell us which order to look at the roads. I, I, I don't know. To me, that just seems like an area where we could probably use our eyes and some expertise, you know, expertise and some educated guesses. So I guess I, you know, when you say, you know, could you save that $50,000 or not? I would just sort of suggest that it might be worth really trying to, just because I, you know, we talked about hiring somebody to bore holes in the road and look at, you know, samples and so on, and I just am not sure if that's going to get us any closer to a sort of, you know, it might get us a perfect solution for what order to do the roads in, but I think, I think we could probably get pretty close. And I think, I think people, you know, we, it has been a long time since we've spent money on the roads. I don't think that there's a sense, I haven't heard from anybody that there's sort of a sense of emergency. So I think if we were to sort of slowly but steadily work on those projects and maybe tell the town, like, we have to take it slowly because of our budget constraints. We, we're, we're doing it, you know, it's going to happen, and please be patient. We're going to, you know, maybe do two streets per year or something like that, that I think people would understand, you know, understand that that work needs to be stretched out. So I, I think, you know, the question about when you say maybe would, it would be inefficient, I mean, maybe, but our project is going to be pretty small for a major road repairing company anyway. So, you know, we're probably not going to be looking at big companies to do the work, and my guess is we could find somebody to do the work for a reasonable price. So that, that would just, I mean, it's not very scientific, but that's just my sense on it. And I just wanted to sort of throw it out there while I had the opportunity to do that and just say, I think, I think taking it slowly would be okay, and using our town manager and our consultant as much as possible would be a good idea. So that's my thought.
I, I could get on board with that, but I, Matt, I guess it's up to you if you feel that Doug has the qualifications for that, and if you feel that eyeballing is, is okay. Because as of today, Surrey Street, you know, they had those signs up that there was going to be some work done, and nothing has, nothing has happened there. And now, as of today, there are holes on, and Steve, you might have noticed it, it's very close to your home. There are now holes on Trent on my street.
We lost power, water yesterday.
Yeah, but this is from Washington, from the gas leaks. They're now drilling holes into Trent and Uppingham. So those roads, if they follow suit with what's happening on Surrey, you know, Surrey is, is pretty messy right now. That road is in pretty, is in disrepair for sure. So I guess the question is, Matt, do you feel, do you feel comfortable with your staff be, making that decision as to what roads do and do not need to be repaired and setting up a calendar?
Yeah, I, I think it goes to Franny's point, I think, earlier, is that, you know, the more information we have ahead of time, the more informed decision we can make. That being said, yeah, Doug, Doug has an engineering background, so he's, he is a good resource on that. And generally speaking, if we went out to bid, the companies would give their, their honest assessment of how they would tackle the project as well. So I, I don't think that, I don't think that that money is, I don't think that getting the roadwork done is contingent on that money being a part of the budget. But it, it's, you know, it's, it's a policy decision about what, what the best way to do it is. So I, I think either, either is doable, to answer your question.
I guess if I could just follow on my other point, I know Robin was raised that, but I just, on the second proposal about reducing services such as snow removal and composting, um, I mean, I don't know how much money we could save there, but I think it would create a lot of confusion and unhappiness in the community. There's a lot of really, um, positive feelings around composting, thanks to Robin. And, you know, I think with the snow removal, we've kind of finally figured out how it works, and there was a lot of confusion about that for many years, too. And, you know, I think in the interest of public safety, it really is something that the town should maintain control over and not, um, sort of say, okay, we're going to stop taking care of the sidewalks. You know, you're on your own. And we have, as I've mentioned times in the past, when we have all these kids walking through town to get to school, and we just have to have safe sidewalks so that they don't walk in the road. And if we don't clear the sidewalks, we can't be sure that the homeowners will do that. So I, you know, I've, I've made that point before, but, um, I, I just think that would create a lot of heartache. So anyway, and Robin, you were next, I think.
Yeah, it was actually a different topic. It was to do with the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan money. And really, there is a lot of concern in town about stormwater, which, you know, was very evident at the hearing we recently held in 19 Cumberland Avenue. And there's certainly plans afoot to request funds to try to address stormwater problems in town. It is quite likely that the ARPA funds will include stormwater as one of the appropriate ways to spend that money. So the point is that we may have competing things that would be going for the ARPA money in town, and just to signal that now.
But I just wanted to follow up on Franny's earlier comments. The Budget Committee is not endorsing any specific option. It's just putting them out there for the council's consideration. At, as a resident, I think that the town should clear the sidewalks because it's a public good, and I live on a corner with a sidewalk, but that's my own personal opinion. Regarding the, the roads, I, I'm the first to admit I'm not a roads expert, and I would absolutely defer to Matt and Doug and, and other people that have their views on that. What I would advise is if we don't spend that money on the roads, we should start putting that money into the special capital fund, which is still unfunded. Because one day, there could be some giant pothole or problem at the pool or whatever. So we should put that into the special capital fund if we have extra money. It's always been our intention, it was the, the council president's suggestion to have this fund, but we haven't, we haven't been able to put money in there yet. And I would feel a lot more comfortable if we could start building it up.
I, I wanted to follow on Robin's point, too, which is, I think, I mean, I could make an argument that you could improve the roads and also have it done in a way that would improve the flow of stormwater on our streets. You know, if you can look at, you know, better, better sidewalk configurations or better curbs or different curb cuts or, you know, I don't know what, you know, we talked in the past about those little trenches that they have over in Northwest DC. I mean, it seems to me like there might be a possibility to weave them together, and so maybe it wouldn't be a competition so much as an overlap, so.
For, for our roads, yes, there are ways. The preamble of the papers is also highly consistent with our, repairing our roads. So they, they do dovetail in some ways, but it is, it's not the only thing there. I mean, some of our stormwater problems, again, evident from the hearing, are not to do with our roads. It's what happens before the water gets to the roads. It's, it's, it's a lot of the problem. And so there are two different lines we need to take.
Um, I just would like to chime in. I, I too am all in favor of clearing the sidewalks, and I love that the town picks up the tab for, for composting. But I, I might mention that that, those are services that are not offered by our neighboring communities. Chevy Chase Village, residents have to clear their own sidewalks. Town of Chevy Chase, if it's over four inches, they clear the sidewalk. So just, just for the, again, I'm all for clearing the sidewalks, but if you have a really bad year and there's a lot of snow, you can spend a lot of money on clearing the sidewalks. And, and I think we should just be open and honest with the community and say, other communities don't do this, but we do it because we feel it's important. But they should know that that is an over and above service that the town offers. Paying for compost that, what is it, Robin? Half of the people use? That, that is a service that other communities don't offer. So it won't only be, it won't only be stormwater. People, when, if they really drill down and look at the budget, they might be like, why are, why are the, our taxes higher? Because I don't compost. I don't have a sidewalk in front of my house. And this is just something that you all, who will be on the council, again, I'm in favor of it all, but I think it's fair to put all of that out to the community and tell them communities don't do this.
We'll point out that about 25% of our budget goes to the pool. And that is one reason why our taxes are higher.
Well, yeah, and that's another, you see, if we start breaking it down, I think that'll be unfortunate. I think, because I think the community should operate as a whole. And not everybody uses the pool, not everybody uses the tennis courts. And if we start dividing the community up like that, I, 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 I don't see that in a positive light. I see that actually as very divisive and harmful. So I would hope that we, we go for the good of the community as a whole. And I would hope that Jack and Robin and Steve would agree with me on that, that everybody doesn't use every service. Everybody doesn't like every amenity here in town. But what Somerset, we just went through this, we want to be a welcoming community where we welcome people with many different interests that like different kinds of things. And, and that's where I would hope you all are going to take this community and not, well, we're just going to focus on X or we're just going to focus on Y. I, I would hope that you all are going to focus on, on the town and everyone in town as, as a whole.
Thank you, Barbara. We are about out, out of time. We have a few more minutes in case somebody wants to make a point strongly. I would like to say one thing myself, which is, I think the Budget Committee proposal, if things become more dire of a two-cent increase in the property tax, would be a useful, is a useful part of the article that they are planning on submitting for the Journal. And I think it plays into the question of what level of services does the community want to support? And, you know, there's always the trade-off. If, if, if people don't want to pay more in taxes, then we can look at which of the things the town currently does should we cut back on.
But I agree with Marty on that. And I, I would, you know, we talk a lot about the things that the people in the town use, but we, I, you know, every budget season, I'm sure most of you will remember, we always get, you know, specific requests from people to spend more money on our public safety. And, um, you know, so there are other interests in the town that, you know, maybe aren't subject to a sort of like a composting contract or, or some other, or a pool contract or tennis, you know, whatever. So I think, and they, a lot of times, these ideas really only do come up at budget season, but I think it is part of what Barbara was saying about publicizing all of these services together and not prioritizing them. So recognizing that for some people in the town, the most important way that the town could spend more money would be, you know, hiring more off-duty police officers, and for other people, that's not the highest priority. So I, but I also agree with Marty that I think putting the 2% property tax proposal into the five-year plan that is presented to the community is a good way of putting everybody on notice that there might not be enough money in the, in the budget of doing this, and it still leaves open the other options for the future council who adopts the next budget to say, in fact, that's not what we want to do. We'd like to cut services or we'd like to, you know, reduce capital spending and so on. But what it does right now is it helps everybody see the numbers in the right perspective and how we could make the money up going forward without tying anybody's hands going forward.
Could I just make two quick points? I, I think, Franny, it would be important to call that property tax increase a possibility rather than a proposal. Just, I think that's, because we're, nobody's proposing it yet. We're just saying it's a possibility. We don't have to make any decisions until a year from now, when the FY '23 budget's being discussed. And then in response to Barbara's comments, I just wanted to say, you know, even if you don't use, for example, a pool in Somerset, and you're paying for it out of your, your taxes, your, your property value does benefit from the town having that pool, from the town having those tennis courts, from the town clearing the sidewalks. Sidewalks are a public good, by the way. It's the children going to school that use those sidewalks. And it, it's not the homeowner that uses the sidewalk. It's everybody else, really. So it's a public good. All these services benefit the whole town, even if you don't use them. It's, it's reflected in your property value. My two cents.
I'm sorry.
I do, too, Phil.
I do too, Phil. Thank you.
Well, um, if if there's no other burning common people want to make, I really want to thank Phil and I want to thank all of the members of the Budget Committee who have been working very hard to try and figure out what's going on with our budget and who are working hard on articles for the journal uh, that will accompany the mayor's budget.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.
The next item on our agenda, somebody mentioned public safety. Does Public Safety Committee would like to do a survey? And you have, uh, you know, under the new committee rules, surveys are to be approved by the council. We're not taking action here today. We're taking a look at it. It would go on the May agenda for approval. So this is the time to think about whether there are any questions you had of the survey, any feedback you want to give committee members.
I have I have a question. Um, I actually, I I like the survey. I I don't know much about surveys, but I thought it was really well done. But would the committee send it out or would this be something that our town manager would send out and 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 who, yeah, who would who would be in charge of this project? Because I feel like with how many committees do we have? Fifteen committees and bunches of different surveys and I feel like it's a lot to ask of our town manager to do this. But but what's the plan of the committee? Do you know, Marnie? Or does anyone know? Who's the liaison? Franny, are you the liaison?
I think Steve and I are. Yeah, Steve, go for it.
Yeah. So the the Public Safety Committee has been working on this survey for a while. And I thought the standard process we have is we we agree to was to have the council review them in in part like you were asking Barbara to make sure that we're not burdening the the residents with too many surveys.
No, my my question was who's going to um, send it out and tally up the the responses? Is that the committee or the town manager?
I think I was gonna send it out on the town announcements. They have, they they created the Google, the link in the Google survey themselves. So they they have the backend access to tally up the votes and use the information and report on the information to you all.
Wonderful. Thank you.
The stormwater, uh, stormwater committee's doing. You send it out, but they've been doing all the follow up and analysis.
Exactly.
Okay.
I just, I had a technical point and on question two where it asks, uh, in the town of Somerset, how safe do you feel? And it go you go, it goes through various options. Like at home, uh, at the pool, at the tennis courts or the basketball court. And you can rate it and down at the end, there is no opinion. So this is question two. Um, and the point is that the no opinion thing is ambiguous. If you don't play basketball on basketball courts, you obviously have no opinion and that's right to say no opinion at that point. But you might also play basketball and still have no opinion. Um, and so it's, in other words, the response there is unclear because of that. And so what you need either is a sixth alternative or alternatively split no opinion into no opinion slash don't use. That way, at least you know that you're getting ambiguous answer.
I I think that I see that Kamara is on the work session. I know he's not participating, but I hope that he heard that feedback and maybe we have time to bring that back to the survey author and and see whether that feedback is is welcomed. Um, Steve, would you agree with that approach or?
Um, sorry, can you say again?
I mean, it sounds like Robin has a specific comment. I, you know, I I didn't draft the survey. Neither did Steve. I think um, I'm not sure that I feel strongly about making the change, but if you think it would be an important technical change to make, I would just encourage I if Steve thinks it's the right thing to do, I think you should just send an email with that feedback to Bruce and let let him through the committee again before they send it out. It may just be an oversight, but um.
Right. I think the committee, but I don't think that the council should be having to have to line by line approve everything in the survey and double check all edits and corrections. I think we can, we should receive a draft copy. We can provide feedback. And then let the committees move on. I I would just rather not.
Yeah, I don't I don't think it needs to come back to us.
To Bruce saying it caught my eye, could catch my eye. So, all right.
Yeah. And and you know, if if their committee feels like um, you know, the project is complete and they're ready to send it out, I think maybe you know, would just they'll just take note of it when they tally up the data. I'm not.
Question, I, I'm sorry.
To do with it tonight. I mean, I, you know.
Well, I said, that's it. I'll send it out to Bruce.
Perfect. Okay. Sounds good to me anyway.
I had a question on question five, which says, how satisfied are you with the following town of Somerset services? And the first item is fire services. I mean, I actually don't think we provide fire services. We rely on the three nearby fire departments. Unless you count the hydrants. I mean, I I wasn't sure how to take that particular question. Did anybody, did anybody else have that reaction?
It doesn't bother me. I'm I'm sort of of the mind with with Steve that you know, they've they've thought about this. They've put together a survey and unless it's something that's
I mean, I think you could you could correct it by saying fire fire services in the town of Somerset and you know, the result would be that people would be referring to their experiences with the fire services that serve the town of Somerset. I mean, but I think, um, I mean, no, I don't think anybody believes that the town is actually providing any fire services.
Well, I'm not sure, Franny. I'm, you know, I wouldn't ever assume people don't.
All right, well then. Maybe you can tell him.
I try to keep these things separate, you know?
Send an email to Bruce saying that your your sister. I think it's fine. I, it doesn't bother me.
What about the question, question thirteen? I mean, how do you understand what the question is asking exactly?
I don't have it printed out.
Oh, okay. The question is, uh, would you like to receive information about the potential installation of surveillance video cameras at town of Somerset entrances in case a crime occurs in the town?
Yeah, I saw that question too. It obviously goes back to the email exchanges that went on about surveillance cameras after the couple of um, house entry incidents that occurred over the summer, I guess it was, wasn't it? Um, and I think that's probably a compromise um, in terms of a question.
Yes, it's pretty open ended. I mean, you could be asking, how much does it cost to install them? What, how would they work?
Well, it but it but it's only asking about, would you like to receive more information about them? That's that's what the question is.
But but what kind of information? I mean, it doesn't say. There's a lot of different kinds of information that could be provided. I'm not sure.
Age interest in surveillance cameras, you know? If it turns out that nobody in the town or, you know, really cares about surveillance cameras, except for a couple of people who spoke up on the listserv, then they'll they'll capture that with this question, I guess.
Well, then, um, is there anything anybody else wants to say about this? So, um, Steve or Franny? You feel, are you going to be giving any feedback to Bruce or Robin? And and then the last thing is, would this go on the agenda for approval at the May meeting?
I, could I ask? Or throw out this idea, if Robin's willing, since you're going to write a message to Bruce about your question, could you include the references to Marnie's two questions?
Um, I can do that, yeah.
And then that way Bruce has the feedback from the council from the work session and fall in one place.
I I do like the idea of of Matt wearing a farmer's helmet going out.
The public work staff can have another role.
Yeah.
Do we need to wait for this to the May meeting for a vote or can the, can we just in this work sessions? This this doesn't require special public comment, does it?
Well, I, um, we have to look at what the committee work guidelines are. What does it say? Does it say the council has to vote on it or not?
Let me see, I'll pull up the, find the charter.
Talking about the guidelines the council approved.
I think we'll we'll ask, uh, the town attorney and get back to you.
Well, it mean it, the state, there's a statement in the guidelines about surveys and I don't remember whether it says the council should talk about it or whether the council has to actually approve it.
You can't approve it at a work session, so we'll get back to you and figure it out.
Okay, thank, thank you.
You can't find the guidelines? Okay.
I was trying to look it up real quickly, but um.
You can can kind of be looking while we talk about this next item. The work session may wind up getting somewhat shorter because I I don't know how much we can actually do on the personnel manual. Uh, our our town attorney had some ideas of how to revise the manual and in fact was suggesting two different documents. And uh, he has apparently got a very, very full platter and hasn't had an opportunity to take a look at the personnel manual. I I don't know if anyone had comments they wanted to make based on this draft or whether you think it's um, worth just passing this on to the new council as a project because at the point in time when the town attorney has had a chance to read, to offer his comments.
I I guess the question really is for Matt because he needs to hire. Well, yeah, I guess the question really is for Matt. Is waiting okay for you, Matt? Is that going to work with your schedule?
Yes, that's fine.
And I'm good with, and I'd rather wait to to have the new council start and finish that project. I think that makes it easier.
Yeah, I I had a couple of comments on it, but as I will be a part of the new council, I can save them for then. So it's all right.
Anybody else want to weigh in or can we just give this a pass?
I'd like to give it a pass.
Okay.
I didn't have any comments on it anyway.
I'm I'm sorry, what, Franny?
I didn't have any comments on it anyway.
But I I mean, one, one comment. Do we want to have a section in it on um, working from home and what we require of a home environment when working from home? Because that's happening.
Thanks, yeah.
No, no other comments on the personnel manual? Okay, if not, uh, we could move along to talk about the rain garden refurbishment and entrance plans from the Groundsmith Collective. Man, I think you're the point person on this.
Okay, uh, maybe I'll I'll share my screen because there let's see, there was a us a little bit of an update since I um, first sent it around. So it might be easier for people to follow along that way. Bear with me one moment. Okay. So, uh, the Groundsmith Collective folks put together this um, document for us prioritizing or helping to prioritize and strategize for some of the areas that need investment. A lot of these we've we've talked about before and sort of prioritize prioritize them ourselves, but um, three big areas are in the town green space. Surrounding Capella Park and at the town pool. So the the rain garden and and bio retention spaces there. And then along Dorset Avenue on, I believe it's called Founder's Park there. So there were some some ideas that they had about switching to more of native plant based landscaping. So the uh, even at the town hall itself, we haven't made the priority in the past of putting in native plants. So there were some some examples at the town hall that they gave. And then they they walk through the the various spots throughout town, some of them that need just a complete overhaul, some of them that just need filling in but have some good spaces. And they gave an example of, I I think it's about twenty or twenty five different plants that that we can choose from. Um, that are all that work for the various work for the various environmental zones and uh, areas in town. Now, one of the things that Kelly recently reported back to me when we we spoke was that she sat in on a a talk that some expert had given about the cicadas and how they said you should be careful of planting even small plants like this in some of our rain gardens and things. Um, and so she had said, well, maybe then we should um, put off a lot of our planting and instead focus on removing some of these invasive or non-native species, putting in things like like uh, some rocks to help with the flow of water in some of the spaces where that would happen. Um, I think there's couple of things to unpack with that. And number one is that it it becomes a budget question then too. Now, there's, there is a possibility. My my understanding from her is that she has put a lot of these plants on hold for us so that we can make the order now and install them in the fall. But it may not allow for us to do the full investment in the spring that we've budgeted for. And instead put some of it off in the fall. Right now, we have fifteen thousand dollars budgeted for this year and five thousand for next year. Um, the second thing is that without a lot of robust planting, if we're only removing, it only makes it look more sparse in in the near term at least. And so I think after talking it over, I think the best plan of attack at this point is to avoid the larger plants that would be more susceptible to the cicadas and instead focus on on the um, ground level and smaller plants that will then fill up some of the areas, especially that are looking sparse or that look completely dilapidated like over at the over at the town pool. Um, that gets us at least started, allows us to put a good investment in it this spring. Put on hold what we can for the fall. And then really, when the fall comes around, do a full removal of the species that aren't doing a lot of good for the for the for the biome and replacing them fully and completely with native species that range from these ground level plantings to even some of the the red buds and and asters and and things that she talks about. Um, so that's kind of the high, high level thing. I, you also have the You also have the short write-up that I provided as well as the the PDF document that I was just sharing. But I'm happy to answer questions or discuss it further, get your thoughts. I think the plan at this point was for Kelly to write up a specific proposal with a dollar amount for you to approve at the May meeting. And then to get, you know, get started on planting at that point.
I could start the questions. I'm not even sure where in this year's budget and next year's budget the money is for either Kelly or the plantings. So that would be helpful. And then I'd like to go over, you know, there were a number of deliverables in her the proposal that she gave us. And I'd like to know kind of where we are with, with those deliverables and whether she has a plan for anything that's still on the list.
Yeah, so to your first question, it's 69203-2 landscaping.
The left number, the small numbers.
Three, 308, if you're just looking on the Excel row. And then in terms of the other deliverables, like the workbook, for example, they, they actually, she, she has shared with me a draft of some of the pages for there. They've, they've got, they've got a lot of, a lot of nice pictures as well as instructions for the various spots and what kind of care the different plants need. There's still some, some spots to fill in. But they've been sharing with me a Google Drive that they've been working on that has some of that information. So I think they, they would like to, they'd like to do that. They'd like to get that completely finished and delivered to us. I think the plan was to do a, after we've ordered the plants, to then do a instructional training for our staff in May that coincides with the actual planting of the different materials and installation of different landscaping stuff that we have. And after that's completed, to then hand over an instructions manual and a, a, a piece of literature, so to speak, that the town has, that goes, goes into detail of what plants are chosen for their, the specific type of environment that it was chosen from. It's actually kind of interesting. The, the Bee City, as a matter of fact, website has information and suggested plantings for different environments. Like if it's sunny, sunny and moist, or sunny and dry, or dark and moist, or dark and, all those different options. And so it's, it, a lot of it is sort of taken from that and mirrors that list, listing of preferred native species that thrive in those types of communities. And then sort of secondary choices of those might be unavailable that still, still sort of fit the, fit the, fit the environment. And, you know, a lot, a lot of different factors that go into play, like repelling of deers and things, things like that.
Can I ask you a question? Maybe, maybe I missed this in your presentation. But I wrote down 15,000 budgeted for this year, 5,000 for next year. And I just wonder if you could give me a sense of how much in this proposal that they're making for this new plan because of the cicada, how much are they proposing to spend during this fiscal year? And first of all, so will they be spending the full 15,000 but just on other things than they had originally planned for? Or will they be spending less than that so that we actually will have money left in our budget that will be unspent? And then my next question would be, do you still think that 5,000 in next year's budget is going to be sufficient? Given that we're pushing back some of the planting in the way that you're describing? So I just wondered if you could tie it a little bit more closely to the numbers. I understand the proposals generally speaking about the types of plants. I'm not gonna, you know, I, that's not my area of understanding particularly, but I would obviously defer to her. But I just, I, I'm trying to get a handle on what we would actually spend between now and the end of this fiscal year. And, and what we would shift to next year and whether we need to change our numbers.
Yeah, I think that we I think that no matter what, over, over the same, over the same period, it would be the same amount of money. From talking with her, she thinks probably a 50/50 split would be more, more appropriate based on the information that she has about the cicadas. But I, I brought up the fact that she's able to put things on hold for us. So I, if it's not a road that we want to go down, we can, we can make it work with the money as it, as it is allocated.
My question was more, was a little bit different in the sense that I'm just wondering if this is something. If we do want to spend $20,000 on this in total or not.
Okay.
And so again, this to me seems like the kind of work that could be spread out of a lot, out over a longer period of time if it made more sense financially. And although I recognize that we have a contract with this company, it seems like, you know, having the relationship would be something we could still, we could still come back to her in the future and pay her consulting fee for a shorter term project when it came time to do more planting in the future. If, rather than sort of keeping her on retainer for, from year to year. I guess I'm just raising the question, since it hasn't been spent yet, is it still worth spending in this way, given that we can't spend it on her advice as in the same way that was originally planned?
So I think for every, for every 20 foot by 10 foot space, we would, we could budget to spend about 2,000 two, between $2,000 and $3,000 in terms of purchasing all of the plants to fill it up, various trees, things like that. And so there are, there's, I believe, eight of those that are identified in there. So you're, you're talking 16 to 20, you know, $25,000 if you wanted to go kind of all out on it.
Yeah. I'm talking about this at length tonight, but I mean, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, is there $7,000 to $10,000 in the budget for this year that we're not spending for good reasons? And, you know, would we see that as something that would make us more comfortable about talking about the pool opening? So, you know, I just, I, I hear you say that Kelly says, don't spend a lot of money on this right now. And I get that, but in my mind, these kinds of landscaping improvements are things that could be spread out over time and looked at, you know, with this good advice about the types of plants. I mean, that is not going to go bad.
Yeah.
You know, we have a current, a current question in our budget about something that the community is interested in. So I, you know, just trying to find out, is that money going to be unspent?
I, I think it could, it could be. I think the, the deliverable that we're not getting, if we elected to do that, would be their assistance in procuring the plants, basically. We would, and, and, and the hands-on, the hands-on training and teaching that they, they would be able to do with, with our staff. Now, we would still get a maintenance manual for all of our spots that go into detail about the types of plants and the types of care that it requires. A list of species that exist there now that, that they would recommend for removal. A list of native plants that could go there in the future and, and what kind of timing it would take to, to do the proper maintenance on it. So I think no matter what, we're going to get a product out of this that allows us to do long-term planning. It's a question of, we put in some money for it now. Do we want to, do we want to get the short-term benefit as well of the installation? Do we want to only do that in one spot right now? You know, that, the, the pool, for example, where the, the bio retention area pool is going to open soon. So get that looking nice or at least start it off. Or, or, or go all in and go all for it all right now. I don't know if I'm answering your question or not in a roundabout way. I, I think the short answer is yes, we would still get something for what, for our money that we've already spent to Groundsmith Collective. We would not, and we would save on the planting. We would, we could then go back to it at a later time if we wanted.
Go back to Groundsmith Collective. If the budget was looking stronger, you could go back to them in the future and open up a new contract for consulting or do an hourly, you know, hourly consulting arrangement for actual planting or something. It seems to me now that you know that she's out there and then her company is a good one, that, you know, that's just somebody else who's on your roster. I mean, you know.
Well, yeah, and in fact.
I understand that you're trying to figure out exactly what is left to be delivered from the contract. And I appreciate that level of attention because obviously, you know, it's disappointing that we can't sort of finish it up and be done with it and have it all done and looking great. But, um, anyway, I, I guess I hear you saying that some, some money will be unspent, but we don't have a sense of the dollar.
I quick two cents worth on this. I did look through the proposal in fact, and a lot of the ideas are very good. There was no, no particular pricing with the different parts of it. So it's hard to work out exactly what the relative costs are in FY21, FY22. I mean, the ideas were so good that I'll steal some of them from my yard, frankly. So that's, that's good. Do we want to prioritize at all ourselves in case, you know, things we want to do now versus down the road? Is really what I'm saying because, you know, there are two things that strike me. One is that the pool area bio retention ponds are just not working. They, they, they're not working because they have no plant, there are very few plants alive in them right now. And they really do need to be very carefully reconsidered. And the, the Groundsmith Collective have done a very good job in explaining why they're not working. If you read the details, that they've been planted with sunny plants that need shade, and it's shady there. And that's, that's a real problem. So that's one area where, yes, we should probably should move quickly on. The other, the other thing that just got me was what the heck were we doing? We've planted, put shrubs, put shrubs in at the entrance on Dorset that are poisonous to birds. What were we thinking? That needs to be fixed very quickly too. You know, there are other ideas, obviously, but those were the ones that sort of rose to the top for me.
I was a big proponent for doing a garden contract in part because I'm so embarrassed by how the rain garden and the bio retention area at the pool site look. I, I mean, Kathy Pickhar and I were about ready to go down and dredge the site out ourselves. I mean, part of the notion of this contract was that helping our staff understand how to take care of the area and to do a better job of planting. The bio retention area was never professionally planted. We had the county coming out to do an inspection. And some of us dug things out of our garden to plant stuff around the bio retention area so that we would sort of pass the county inspection. But it was never professionally done. And I particularly feel the rain garden right next to the end, the, the, the bridge. People walk by it all the time and it is truly, from my perspective, an embarrassment. And it isn't doing the job because it's gotten filled with dirt and there are hardly any plants left. It's a real priority to try and, and get that part fixed. Looking at deliverables, you know, she had planned to do a workshop for not only the staff but for the town. Asset mapping, figuring out with the staff how to keep a good record of what plants are going in. And, you know, I would, I definitely feel like those were items that we, she thought were important, what were important for the town and that I think we agreed were important. So I know we don't have a lot of money, but I think we, we, we should be getting some of these deliverables and we should be making some investment. And now, and I think Robyn's focusing on the rain garden and the poisonous plants. Those are, those are two really good things. I'm still not clear, Matt, whether in the budget, that was the mayor's budget that was introduced at the last meeting, whether all of these items are actually, were actually in that budget. I mean, we've had so many iterations, or I've seen so many iterations of the budget. I'm, I'm just not clear whether that was in there.
Yeah, in the bu, in the budget that was introduced, there's $5,000 that's in that, in that line item for.
That's still this year, right?
That's FY, that's FY22. There's, there's, there's $15,000 this year, $5,000 in FY22. And we, we projected 2,500 moving forward for just annual maintenance. So I think, I think perhaps some of the feedback I'm, I'm hearing is, is maybe cut back on, on the overall expenditures this year, but focus and prioritize on getting rid of the non-native stuff that is, is poisonous. And also sprucing up, so to speak, the areas around the pool, the bio retention and the rain garden there.
Teaching the staff how to take care of it, you know?
And I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. That part is always, that's, that is a deliverable that we will get no matter what. That is not contingent on us buying the plants this, this spring. So, so I, I think the, the, we do have the opportunity then to, to save $10,000 or so on, on plants.
Do you think you need to put it into the next budget then? Is $5,000 enough?
Well.
Over two years, right?
I, I, I would, yeah. I, I guess I would like to get more information before I answer that question definitively. I'm, I'm, I'm having a follow-up question with Kelly tomorrow. And I will also make sure that she's prepared to answer any questions about that at the May meeting for you.
So are you, you, you are telling me that line 308, the $20,500 proposal was in the budget the mayor introduced? I just want to be sure I understand.
No. No, the budget? Which budget, what, which budget are you looking at? I'm sorry.
Well, you, you gave us in our package for this meeting, a budget. And I'm looking at the line you told me to look at, line, is it 308?
That, yes, that was the update, that was the updated one that I had been working on as a working draft with, with Phil. So no, the, the proposed budget, or excuse me, the introduced budget that was passed at the, at the meeting was in line three. If you're looking at line 308, it's 15,000, $15,000 in column O. The FY21 end of your projection and $5,000 in column P. Proposed FY22.
Was all of you?
So was all of the, the bottom line on that is it's not a new drain on the budget. It was there on the budget that we looked at that had, you know, the where the reserves were and all those kinds of things.
That's, that's, that's right. Yes.
Does anybody else have any reflections or advice for Matt before he sits down with Kelly again? I I want to say I I really value her judgment about the direction the town needs to go in.
Yeah, I I second that. It it really was very good set of recommendations in fact for us.
Yep, I I agree. I'm just curious, which committee is involved in this? Is it Parks and Rec? Or we do, do we not have a committee involved in this effort? I'm seeing this, this is absorbing a lot of the council's time and Matt's time. And it might be something that if if we're not currently doing it, we could ask Parks and Rec to leave.
I know that she has, um, she has met with at least a few members of the Parks and Natural Resources Committee, I think, when when she was doing some of her initial mapping of the town and looking at our our various um, rain garden opportunities and assets.
I agree with Steve. I think that's a great idea. I think this is exactly the kind of thing that should be done in the committee level because they could be, there could be overlapping or conflicting work being done in that committee. And um, you know, we're committing a lot of money to this and it would really make sense for the volunteers in the community to do the detail work, I think, is a good idea.
Good suggestion. And any other points people want to make before we move on to the next item?
The only point is with PNRC is 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 their rate of work. So maybe you could ask for a deadline because this is FY twenty one money, so.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
The next item on the agenda, if we're ready to move on, actually, it also involves the Parks and Natural Resources Committee. They've been working for, starting way more than a year ago, on an amendment to the code on trees. I don't know whether um, Barbara, Fran, do you want to say more than that? I think what they're asking for tonight is just the ability for the committee to work with our town attorney. You know, we, in our guidelines, we've said the town attorney can't, cannot be asked by committees directly to commit to work. Uh, so they're asking whether or not the town attorney might be a, whether the council would would suggest the town attorney would be an appropriate person to work with them.
Kristen on this about a year ago. Um, and I do think it makes sense to have Ron involved at this point because um, you know, they, rather than having them draft any legislation, I think it would be better to have him involved. Also, he has a lot of, you know, um, reference points with the other communities that he represents. So I I think it, I think it would be worth it. I think it would help put it into the right frame of our code and and also, you know, any changes that would be made would need to be thought through for consistency and so on.
Barbara, any comments that that's okay with you?
I know that Kristen has been anxious to work with Ron on this. She's mentioned it, mentioned it to me several times, so I'm hoping the council will approve of that.
Well, we don't actually take any votes at at this meeting, but I think the sense of the council is that it's, it would be fine for the town attorney to work with the Parks and Natural Resources Committee.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
I think that would be great.
Okay. Anything else people want to say on this one? If not, I want to turn the floor over.
Actually, there was something, Marnie, it just that Ron will pick this up, but just what they're wanting to do is is indicate in it that the person applying for the permit should show the trees removed in the last five years. And that gets at the serial remover problem, and and I understand why it's there. The problem is some of the homeowners asking for trees removed, wanting to be living in their home for five years. And so the 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 language needs to be modified a bit to reflect that. It's what it boils down to. I think Ron will pick it up, but just, that's it.
Also, you know, I I hope that at some point we can get that information centralized at the town office so that that doesn't go become, you know, something that a new homeowner needs to come up with. I mean, if there have been trees removed on a property and if if the town wants to know about it, then that should be a resource we have from Tolbert. You know, if we're looking at stopping people who are serial removers and somebody is a new owner, you know, by definition, they're not going to be at fault for that. So, you know, I I I do think it's, you know, I think first of all, I've said before, I think this is a very rare problem. And there's a lot of changes being proposed to, you know, try to address something that I don't think is a very common problem in the town. And I think if we had that kind of data from Tolbert available to the town staff, then we wouldn't need to put that on the homeowner.
Is that something that one of you might pass along to Kristen?
I've given her lots of feedback on on what I think um, of those ideas and that is not reflected in what the PNRC is proposing. So I don't think that she and I are aligned on this matter. And I'm not sure that um, my my advice to her would be welcomed at this stage.
Marnie, I I have to agree with, I think at this point, it would be very good for her to work with Ron and get his comments. And I'm, and I'm hap- I'm so happy that Robin brought that up. And I'm sure that will be, get a mention.
We'll see it again, or at least the new council will see it when it comes back.
Exactly.
Okay, so Matt, you can let Kristen know. I don't know how much time Ron has at the moment, but he can certainly put this on his list of things to work on for summer. Uh, well, the last item on tonight's agenda is Steve taking a little bit of time to reflect on some I, things that he's been thinking about and sharing them with us.
What, I just had a few thoughts about the 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 the, our um, our council meeting and preparations for it. And I think that there is, I think we we all appreciate, just, this is more as as a um, case study than trying to, to dig into the details and and solve anything tonight. But as a case study, the way the, I thought of the way the um, the the request to fund, the the request to approve an early opening of the pool did not facilitate a, an effective discussion by council members. Sorry, my head's cut off, just wanted to handle it. You know, for example, um, we did not have, just in in in, I clearly understand there are a lot of financial variables uh, that we're still getting up on updates on with regards to the budget. And I know that both the pool committee and Matt have been working to get numbers from the, from the management, the pool management company, American Pool. But the bottom line is we didn't have in our Rita Head packet, a nice, clear listing of the costs. At least I found it difficult to key track of the different costs, the the management company's costs, utility costs, one week, two weeks, three weeks early, what was happening with the lifeguard rebate. I I just, I'm hoping that as we we move forward, we can try and get into a smooth process, we get this information out. And we also, I think that for important discussions, we've talked about this before, it's it's valuable to have articles in the town journals so that the public knows what we're talking about. And then the public, if our residents and neighbors want to join in a particular debate, they can have a little bit of background and they can then join us in the meeting. Uh, that was it. I just want to share a few thoughts.
I'm so glad you brought that up, Steve, because I've been trying to think about how it could have gone better, too. And I've been trying to think of some, some ways that maybe the new council could, you know, apply frameworks to this kind of conversations. And one thing that occurred to me, and I don't know if you guys um, also were caught up by this, but I think that some of our timing got thrown off by the fact that the issue was brought forward to us as a package of both opening early and extending late. And because of the scope of that proposal, which we knew necess- necessarily extended over two budgets, um, I think that that meant that we, you know, again, we're, the idea was presented to us, please open early and also stay open late. And so because we had to wait for numbers and we knew we needed to wait for estimated expenses and we knew it was probably going to be more expensive than we could afford. And therefore, you know, a lot of, a lot of wait and see on, and and getting information like, like the lifeguard rebate was, I didn't even know that was a thing until last, you know, just before last week's meeting. So I think, I think actually, you know, the, some very small benefit of hindsight on that would have been to separate them out into two different asks from the pool committee to say, you know, can we open early and here, and, you know, which I think there was some logical reason to tie it back to the disappointments of 2020 and, you know, urgency of getting kids out and the excitement that the community would feel and so on. And and the question of keeping the pool open later, to me, is a whole separate issue. And and, you know, could have very easily been separated from the outset so that we could have had two different conversations, one of them about the future budget, one of them about, you know, where can we find money if this is a priority? And how much are we actually looking for? And and um, and and maybe we would even have just prioritized that conversation as something that that did have a real timing element to it because we would need to get American Pools involved and and, you know, get our inspections done and things like that. And so I think, I think that led to some frustration on Matt Zaff's part because from his point of view, his idea was, you know, brought up a long time ago and maybe we weren't paying very close attention to it because it seemed like such a big question that we didn't have a lot of information to use to answer. So I think um, I think you're right on to bring it up as something that maybe was suboptimal. But um, you know, it's, it's a, it's an interesting thing. And I, the other thing I wanted to say is that although I haven't got as many years on the council as Barbara and Marnie, I have enough to remember that when we proposed one year to raise the guest fee from $2 to $5, that I was just blown away at how upset the community was. I mean, people, people came to the town hall of all ages and they were so upset and so angry about the idea. And um, yeah, I think, I think that sometimes some of these numbers questions where we just say, you know, which pocket are we going to take it out of and 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 so on, may seem more like paper questions to us. But when you get into things that involve the pool, I think it's, you really tap into a level, level of emotional engagement that might be surprising to all of us, especially when we sit, sit in in these meeting halls when nobody comes for so much of the year. And, you know, all of a sudden you make what it seems like a modest proposal and everybody goes crazy. So I think that that's maybe something that, you know, maybe it becomes sort of um, you know, a supercharged issue. So then maybe we then have to, I don't know, either spend more time on it or find a way to get the numbers ahead of time so that we truly know what we're talking about. So, you know, I think a lot of the people in town just, they just don't really know how much things cost from one year to another. And so opening the pool week early, well, why wouldn't we have the money? I mean, look at how lucky we are and how, how well, how well our community does and everything. So it it does seem hard for people to understand it anyway. I agree. I'm glad you brought it up.
Are are we in a place to to um, go back to May eights with some kind of motion that gets at least four of us agreed? Is that, are we there? You know, is what I'm asking.
I mean, I don't, I'm not sure. I've been trying to think about it, Robin, truly, I have. Because I've been trying to uh, sort of understand just how something like a fee would work. It seems to me like we would need at the council level to budget. But we would have to budget to pay the full amount to American Pool anyway, right? Because we would owe them that money, like, opening the pool early, that from, as far as they're concerned, that's just a package of expenses. We have a general idea of what that would be, plus our utilities. So we would have to budget that full amount anyway. We would need to have a line item transfer or whatever it's called in order to move that money into the pool in order to open. And then, you know, if we then said, okay, we're going to charge a fee for anybody who decides to sign up for lap swimming, we might get zero people, right? I mean, there is that risk, or maybe you get one or two, or maybe it's only Matt Zaff. And, you know, maybe we don't really even have more than five people who want to sign up for lap swimming. So I think, I think that it it, we can't even put an estimate in our revenues that would offset the 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 expensive, because we really just don't have anything to go off of, I mean.
Right, but uh, because I don't see that as a reason not to do it. I mean, and and I know that sounds paradoxical, but I'll try to explain it. Um, it's partly sending a signal to to the community that we are in a tight budget situation, tighter now, actually, than we thought we were in last week. Um, and that this is something that does cost money if we're opening the pool early. So we're, we're looking for some contribution from.
The distinction, and I understand that this is sort of like where we were with the, with the leaf blowers, that you some, you have to pick an easy way to to make a rule so that it can stand alone as a rule. But to me, the idea that you would sort of pick lap swimmers as the group of people who would need to pay the fee as opposed to, you know, water aerobics users or opposed to people who want to sunbathe and, or, you know, I, it it feels to me arbitrary. I mean, I, I could say, ah, well, I'd like to go to the pool, but I don't really feel like paying that fee. So maybe I'll just go splash around in the shallow end for a little while. And, you know, two weeks from now, I'll swim some laps. It, to me, I I just think it's, it's making a sort of arbitrary distinction. I understand why you're doing it because you're picking a category that's already built into the the reservation system. And maybe it's an easy way to collect some income from some people who have to sign up anyway. But to me, it's just picking on a certain category of people and saying, this group of people has to chip away at the expense of, for the town as a whole, as opposed to saying, this is a community asset. Opening it early would be a shared experience.
I just, I I I need to interrupt. This is not what the purpose of tonight's meeting is about. Rod and I would like to call a special council meeting. We'll figure out how to do that with Marnie and the mayor. Um, and then we can go into this in in great detail. I have a lot of thoughts on this. I know Robin does, too.
But I'm I'm grateful for you, Steve, for bringing it up. Thank you.
Well, I did want to respond to Robin's question, so I recognize that you weren't raising the issue tonight, Steve. But it sounds like we all have a lot to talk about and it does also seem like something that the community would want to hear, um, hear about. Um, but I, I mean, I'm happy to have shared my thoughts with you tonight because I have been thinking about it a lot.
Actually, actually, Steve, I've kind of felt like, I I felt like Robin was inviting uh, the question of whether we could actually determine the answer to what to do. Um, and maybe it was a misperception of what he said.
Is there a point in having a special council meeting where we can vote, vote it through? It's really what I'm asking, um, how we have our positions moderated or, you know, can we get closer together?
So, is there anything anybody else wants to say about that? Well, I want to thank Steve for kicking off that segment. Uh, and I thought it was a very nice conversation and useful. It's probably not going to be much guidance for the next work session that I would chair because I'm, I'm proposing that we not have another work session for this current council. Uh, we ordinarily schedule our next work session on the night of the work session, but that would be a work session in mid-May. And I I'm not sure, uh, I've gotten some feedback on this. I'm not sure what the point is of this group of people sitting down to meet when the majority of this group is not going to be serving on the June council that would be taking up any items.
I agree with Marnie. I just don't think it makes sense for us to have a work session for something. Just don't think it makes sense for us to have a work session for something that we won't be addressing at the council meeting. It's, it'll have you all, you know, fresh eyes. You'll be teaching people, they'll be learning. It'll just make much more sense for you to have at it, I think.
Also, I wanted to mention before I forgot, and this is maybe it's for Jeffrey and Matt, which is that Kabir reached out to me to ask if there was any, going to be any orientation on directors and officer insurance and on, you know.
I've already been in touch with him, so.
Oh, good. Okay. Well, I, I figured you would go over it and everything, but I, I did want, I did let him know that I would, I would ask you, so.
I, I don't know. I, I talked to him yesterday, so I don't know when you talked to him, but.
I, I also have a comment which I brought up with Matt, but just so that all of you understand, I re-watched the meeting on April 5th and the one thing that I found a little frustrating was that when we took a vote, it didn't say it was just three to two or four to one, but it didn't say, there was no, in watching it back, you had no sense, you didn't know who voted which way. So I would just ask you as, as the council members moving forward, that when there is a vote, say, council member Shawl voted X, you know, because everybody is not going to agree and it's, rather than just saying thank you at the end of the vote, you then we really don't know what happened. For, for it to be noted on the recording, the, who voted which way and, and the turnout of the vote.
Okay. I think it's captured in the minutes, but that's, that's fun. That sounds good.
But I don't have, we don't have it till the next month, you know, so it's a little late.
Yeah, that, that's a great point. Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you, Steve.
Well, I, I do think, I think, Robin, just to respond to your question without going into the substance of it. I, I do think that given the community engagement on the matter, that, you know, we probably should try to have a meeting to, to, to talk about again. If we end up with the same, in the same spot, then that's the way it is and um, you know, the new council can take up the question of whether to have the pool open later into the summer and, you know, see how that goes. But I, I think, I think that at this point, you know, there is, we've gotten a lot of people asking for reconsideration of the decision and so I do think we probably need to have, have a meeting. I don't know if everybody, everybody agrees. I, I, I mean, you can tell from what I said earlier, what I think about the idea of a fee and I, I do, I'm not going to change my mind.
Why don't we, I think we can agree, I think, I think we can agree that there will be a special meeting if we can find it. And presuming we can find a good time for everybody.
All right.
Does that seem, that seems good?
Yes.
Okay, well then.
Thank you.
Sort of in closing, I just want to thank everybody for the collaborative spirit you all bring to the table. I feel like these meetings, we, we do make some progress. Sometimes it seems slow, but I think it's, it's been a very useful way for us to spend some time together. So many thanks.
Thank you, Marnie.
Thank you, Marnie. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Marnie. Good night, everybody.
Hi, everyone.